I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that's here, all the many blessings you've given us, and we ask that you be with all the people in America as we see these violent crimes going on and the bad weather that we have coming upon shore tonight. We ask that you keep us all safe. All these things we pray in your name.
I welcome all our guests and visitors tonight, and I will extend a motion to approve our agenda. Have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Anything else? If not, does the favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Or no? All in the same motion. All right. You have in your package the minutes for the September the nineteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to those?
Yes. Under D, oh, oh, business, D, it says that fees are waived for events that are already scheduled to use a stage. My question was, didn't we only agree that we would wait, that we would allow those who had already permitted to use the stage to use it, but if we had established a fee, wouldn't we still charge that fee?
I, I, I believe at that time, I mean, at the last minute, we, I believe we agreed that there would not be a fee at that point, did we not?
Was there only one that's...
There was just one, the fields are paid.
Okay, so, yeah, on that one I knew, but I didn't know if there had been any other scheduled uses where we had agreed upon a fee, and if we had, this would be actually waiving that if there wasn't an scheduled use.
We had a lot of, yes.
What would vote about? Yeah? Or we wouldn't?
Okay, so, if there's only one user, it's fine.
Okay, have a motion to approve the minutes. Have a second. Have a, have a second. Any other discussion? If not, does the favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Or no? You have in your agenda package here the financials for the month of August. Are there any questions or that we can direct to our staff? Okay, moving on. Ten-minute public input. We have one individual, Mike George.
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Well... Well, my, my report is for, is the top dressing of the subdivision town now, about not being able to pull permits, and...
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you.
You're familiar with what...
I, I got spoken to.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
And the issue I've got here is I wanted to buy lots. I didn't buy the subdivision development part at all. And what I've got is I've got a contract for a house that was signed on August thirteenth, and I'm not able to get this contract, and it's about August fifteenth. I'll give up.
I believe, you know, that's something we, we'll need to discuss, and I guess right about as good a time as any is that prior to our implementing that moratorium, he has a contract for the settlement. Do we have any, would we waive that as a resolved thing? Do you understand what?
Yes, I do. I think that's only fair.
Well, I...
Because it's a couple critical days there, so I think that's...
But I know we instructed our staff, and they did exactly what they were instructed to do.
They've been, they've been great. I've got some other sections we know working also. This one, I've got a contract right here that's signed August thirteenth, and I'm already starting the process and everything. I'm obligated to sign it.
Okay. Does anyone have, have a question?
Give me a rough question. Is it something we need to vote on, or can we just instruct?
Well, I think we just tell them, tell the staff to go ahead and deal with that one since it had a, had a date. We need to vote, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
Did all the minutes reflect that?
He's got a contract that I, I told him he'd strike out anything if he didn't want seen, but if it has the date on there, before that time, I think we can probably...
And what would you have done, thought, is there something, I know, I'm building Holly Springs also, I know Holly Springs, they, they rescued it, put an impact P on me to a lot.
Right, but we've talked a little bit about that, and that may be something that ultimately do, but as it stands currently, you know, the moratorium is, is only for that.
Mr. Mayor, let me, yes, I think we have to look at these on individual basis. We've made a general rule, forcing everybody to come forward. There are situations where that rule would definitely apply. If somebody buys sixty lots where the top over, the service hasn't been done, and there are no existing buildings, we'll probably try to enforce that part. Where we have a singular lot, we may look at an exception of an impact P of that portion. I don't know, but I think, my opinion would be to look at that on an individual basis, but right now, the building department's been instructed not to issue any, and those where it's an exception, bring them forward, and then we would, as a council, address them.
Right. That's fine, as long as we would have, we still got to have some policy or got a lot to follow, possibly with the builder and homeowner both signing a document understanding that the street's not complete, and it may not be complete for some time, you know, worded so everybody knows what, what they're getting into, you know, because then when you, where does it cut off? Do you make it one lot, two, five, you know, what you, how do you...
Yeah. Well, I think that's something we need to talk about, but I think we need to talk about it, maybe work out another work session or something.
But this gentleman's got a situation. You're building other houses up there, am I correct in that?
I've got other blocks up there.
Other blocks?
Yeah.
They on the same, on the same street?
I've got two on that street, yes, that I bought from individuals who turn them over.
Well, I think we're gonna have to, our policy right now would permit, permit on that, because we need, we'll now need to get together and decide if we're gonna stick to that as a policy, or if we're going to, as Mr. Cummins said, look at them individually, and if it looks like there's a reason that should happen, maybe, and do something like Mr. Bryan indicated there, that, you know, they come back to the council to make that decision. But we have to, you know, we're trying to get these streets taken care of, and, and we want to put pressure where pressure belongs, and, and that's really not on the taxpayers as such, but, you know, we may end up with that pressure there in the long run, but we wanna, we wanna put as much pressure as we can to get the developer or the one that owns the streets now to, to live up to what we should have made them live up to a long time ago.
Exactly, as long as the bonds are placed.
Right, we should, right, we didn't, we, the city did not live up to its obligation. Right, so, before you get to that next lot there, hopefully, we maybe, we're gonna have some kind of decision about how we're gonna...
Yeah, but for me, I'd be glad to do it.
May I add my question? So, do you have a bond for the streets?
No, I've not a bond. I own the development, all I own is a couple lots.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't buy the subdivision.
But, but it, I, I think you got your answer for this one, you just...
Yeah, I did also, I remember I can't hide, but those are private streets.
Right.
So I thought we can't do anything at that one. I do, I get permits, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be a problem.
Does staff realize the difference between where a private street and a public street?
I hope so. Again, should nod his head, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so you know where you are for the one that you asked about now, then hopefully we'll have an answer soon on the others.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Okay, we have some, under whole business, discussion of the state rental policy. Council Cummins?
Yeah, Mr. Bearster asked last time for us to submit some bullet points relative to this policy, and I've circulated around my viewpoint on the use of the portable stage. I strongly feel that we shouldn't be renting it personally, and even though I was against the building of the amphitheater, the amphitheater is going to be built, it is going to be there, and that would be a venue for doing a lot of things where we transport the stage around town to third-party uses. This, in my opinion, would encourage the use of the amphitheater by other parties. The, uh, stage, and I went through and I bullet pointed it, I said the usage would be only to the city departments, component units, or any other, any other entity that the city provides financial and/or logistical support. Mr. Wood asked me about what I meant by logistical support, and I said, "Well, if you don't like the term, take it out. We could just say financial support." I think we should limit the area of usage to the, within the city limits, and I think that the scheduling process should be done by the component units and the other units during our annual budgeting. That way, we can get an idea of what its usage would be and when it would be used. They might not know the exact dates, but as they got closer to the date, they could provide advance notice of its usage, and the priority of usage that's specified as a bullet point would be on a first-come, first-earned basis, and then the responsibility for returning it in light condition would go to the department, component unit, or entity that will designate a, a specific person responsible for that usage, and the return of that stage would be expected in light condition. If there was any damage incurred, we'd repair it, and that component unit, department, or other entity would pay the cost out of their budget or out of their funds. If they failed to pay it, then the future use by that unit would be denied. And I just took it, put together based on a request for something on a usage.
Mr. Cummins, let me be sure, was it your intention, and I know council hadn't acted on this, but was it your intention that the stage be made available only to those entities you've indicated?
Yes.
Would you want to then, if that's a pleasure of council ultimately to do that, to simply insert the word "only" somewhere in there?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'm not trying to be a wordsmith, but, but somebody could argue that it says you're making it available to those entities, but it doesn't...
Oh, we...
...you from a...
Yeah, I meant only, yes.
And, and then the other point I would just suggest is if, if, if that winds up being the, the pleasure of council, it would be that you consider changing the wording about financial and/or logistical support. You're right, I, I had some concern about the ambiguity of the word logistical, but if you would want to consider rewriting the, the funding issue, just to say that other entities forward to the city appropriate, appropriates annual funding. I was a little bit concerned about the potential ambiguity of provide financial support, because I, I, I think if I understand your intention, if you are included as a line item budget appropriated entity in the city budget, that's what you're trying to include or address, isn't it?
Well, actually, I'm trying to go a little bit farther, because I don't believe the, well, we do contribute to the Arts Council, so I'm not sure if that would do it. I don't know how that would, how we would handle it with, like, River Fest, because we've got that issue with River Fest. Well, what I wanted to prevent is that if we just had a general rental policy of seven hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred, doesn't matter the amount of money, if we had just a general rental policy, we have no way of restricting the usage by any organization that comes up and wants to use it, and I, I would have a very serious problem of an organization that we considered anti-government being able to rent city property and staging a concert in the center of downtown and have somebody claim, "Well, you don't let us use it, you're discriminating against us because you let somebody else use it." We have a, we have an amphitheater, again, I said, even though I voted against the amphitheater, we are going to have it, and we need to encourage its use by other organizations rather than hauling the stage all around town to those organizations. That's my opinion.
Mr., go ahead. I would agree with some of the terms, some of the things that Mr. Cummins proposed, except I think we should definitely have this thing open for rental to an organization that can pay the seven hundred and fifty dollars. As far as the, the potential of having it rented by an organization that maybe the city doesn't particularly care for, but they could go out to the amphitheater, or show, should we not apply this same theory to the amphitheater, that we try to discourage the use of that facility, just like we would do the mobile stage? I, I would think not. So, I, I think we need to have some revenue going into the, the fund to defer at least some of the cost, or at least repair, just under normal everyday use, not every day, but normal use. It's, it's gonna have some wear and tear, and we can pick up some extra seven hundred dollars here and there, and we can build that fund up to where it's several thousand dollars. It helps, rather than just... But the, the stage itself, I would say, might be, single-handedly, the best thing that this city has done as far as create activity downtown. I can't think of another thing. I went down to River Fest this year and saw that stage out there, and people were enjoying that, and then we go, first Friday, I, I get so frustrated when we have a good thing. It's a good thing that that thing's showing use, and then we try to discourage. It is a great thing for this city, and let's keep using it, even if it costs us some money, and we'll just have to budget for it in the next year.
Would it be okay if I rented, paid seven hundred and fifty dollars, and utilized it for a campaign rally?
If you...
Is that for seven fifty?
That'd be okay with me. That's pretty cheap.
That's pretty cheap.
That's pretty cheap, but if we have, if we have nine candidates that rented for seven hundred and fifty dollars, how much does that bring us?
Seven fifty.
How about, how about a dump truck? Can I get that too?
But if all the way the garbage is gonna create...
Pretty soon, we're just going to be in the truck and equipment rental business.
Look, look, look what we've done with it so far, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not saying it's not a good thing. It is a good thing, but let's look, this is, this is equipment that is paid for by the taxpayers and owned by the city, no different, really. You, I know you think it's a little bit different than, than...
Yeah, I do.
...a dump truck or something like that, but it's still city equipment. I doubt legally you could, you could distinguish between the two. So, I mean, that's just my position, is I just don't think we ought to be renting it at all. If, if it's someone is putting something on for a good cause, maybe they should...
Okay, that's, that's final reason, let's put it in the budget.
Particularly if they are doing it for and on behalf of the city, and, and are, and which case they're most likely going to be a city entity of some sort. So, they just put it in the budget? I would vote for that.
Well, I'll go back to my original point, which was, I've gotta come full circle. I, I started with this. I really think it should be in the budget. I think it should be free to whoever we decide to use it, in, in our main street department, our EBA, all the events we have, because as Hooky says, and Gina says, all of you have said out here that have spoken on it, is that, you know, it does speak well of our city, it looks, it looks great. We have some repair that needs to be done to it. Yes, we, we need to pay for it, but your tax dollars are what's paying for it, and that we need to bring people into the city. It brings people in. Everybody enjoys these festivities we have. I think also, a big part of this has been Mr. Kenjibi's expense to his department. I think that's caused a lot of problems. And how we do that, I talked a little bit to the financial area back there, and they, they said there is a way that we could do that, because we got one guy who, only one person, in my way, I understand it, who knows how to take it on a trailer and haul it over and do it safely and bring it back, and it's expensed to him, and overtime, and things of that nature. So, I think we just gotta figure out how we run those expenses in the budget, but we gotta budget it. And I don't know why we wouldn't use it. It's, it's a great tool. I mean, it, it really is, you know, fields are paid, we've done it two, three years, we've done the Colton Dixon thing. Those are great things that bring people to the city. They spend the night here, they spend eating lunch here, they run through the city, they spend dollars, tax dollars here. I think, you know, we should, we should do that, and that's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Bearster?
Thank you, Mayor. Under the usage, I agree with it. I think that's what it should be, only city departments, and all of the different ones we just talked about, for Friday and everything else that's going on. I think those ones have been using it and maintaining it, so I, I don't want to throw it open to, as you say, renting a dump truck. So, I, I like the usage part.
It was...
I've got that, Mr. Bearster, and, Mayor. How do we distinguish the difference between renting the amphitheater and the stage?
I think it's a difference in renting, renting space and, and renting a piece of equipment. Reserving space, I should say.
Yeah.
That's what I call that.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna boil down to what we just went through with the athletic fields. We're gonna have to come to this policy. We have not got a policy on amphitheaters, and I don't want to pull one off the top of my head right now and say something that hasn't had the ample amount to look at it, study it, and we want venues coming in down there. So, there's no problem to me having venues come in. What we need to do is come up with a policy, and it's...
Well, you know, excuse me, but one thing I was gonna say there, is it sort of relates to what you're saying there, is just like that pavilion over at Bowlin Park. Actually, the, the, the fee for that was really for cleanup and all that stuff after they were there. I don't think it was really, I didn't really think of this renting that, you know...
That policy is in, in the city's webpage, and it tells what, and it's not very detailed.
It's, no, I know.
So, I mean, when we make what policy, we could have that one incorporated in both, but it definitely needs to have the policy set.
Well, we, I think we are, we're gonna keep working on this hopefully between now and the next meeting anyway. Mr. Bryan, you got something?
It's a seemingly simple issue at first, and then it gets complicated fast. When you, and it seems like to me when it starts getting complicated is when you get outside of a city of Kansas function, because then you're into a gray area. Fields are paid, we all support, River Fest, we all support. How is that gonna be different if some group comes to town that's not a very popular group? They got every right to rent it, if we start renting it, start letting other people use it that are not city of Canton events. You're gonna run into the same problem with the amphitheater. If you, you rent it to other groups that are not city, you've gotta have a black and white delineation. You can rock along fine for several years like we have, but eventually, you're gonna run up to something that's gonna be a real problem. Second thing is, that is a deteriorating, depreciating piece of equipment. As you said, it is a piece of equipment. It's, it's a trailer, is what it is, and, and it's got hydraulic motors and pumps, and it needs a new floor, I understand. I understand it needs a hydraulic... I understand it needs a hydraulic rebuild. It, it needs tires. There's only one person trained to even operate it. We're, we're just, we're not managing it properly at all. We don't know how much it costs. If that seven hundred and fifty dollar figure is right to charge, or five hundred, or fifteen hundred, we have no idea really what it costs us over time. But if, if we keep it, I would certainly think we should stay strictly City of Canton functions. And I know we'll be, I'll be accused of anti-River Fest and all those things, but this is the first year in twenty-five years I haven't spent my whole weekend volunteering at River Fest, so I love River Fest. But you've got to think about the taxpayers, and to me, the only responsible way to manage this thing is just like other city assets. It's for city functions only.
You know, Jack, yeah?
I would like to say, maybe we could look at grandfathering the events that we have approved him, plus the city events we have. There, there's a way to solve that. And, you know, draw the line there, because those events, we know, we sponsored them ourselves. For River Fest, you know, it's a great event, and we all have spent many hours of our lives down helping River Fest. And, uh, you know, it's, it does a great deal of good for the use of this community. And so do, do the other events that we sponsor. So, maybe we can look at grandfathering those events and just do that in the city. That's just ultimate.
You know, that's quite a good idea. One, one thing we might look at is maybe on events like River Fest that we really would like to see and like to have, maybe we should, uh, discuss with them the possibility of it being a joint city service league venture with this, you know. In, in that case, then, of course, they could use it, and there wouldn't be any problem, because it'd be, it would be a city venture.
One, one other thing you can do, and this can speak to the point I was raising earlier, is that if you want to, you can, you can create some budgetary appropriation. You know River Fest is gonna occur the same weekend in September of the year. Create a budgetary appropriation to them for that corresponding amount. If you, if you're gifting it to the name anyway, you gift it to them through the budget process, and that would maybe, in effect, be grandfathered in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? Yes. Future events, um, we're getting ready to open another park and connect two wonderful parks together, which is gonna create some opportunities for our city that we've never had before. And one thing, and I hate to belabor this, but I feel very strongly, is that we'll be able to do some events down there. I, uh, fun runs, five Ks, that we'll be able to do that totally inside that park, those two parks. And that'll create, I mean, you could have an event down there every weekend of a run. Now, you got the amphitheater is, would be one place, but if we wanted to have where the finish is over there at Heritage Park, part of drawing crowds in there is to, they start off with exercises. They do exercises as groups, and they have bands, and they have a lot of different things going on. When we join these two parks, it's gonna be a massive thing. And we might miss some real opportunities by being trying to let the Nichols and the Little Fine Points here, and, excuse me if this offends, but this thing about renting a, a truck versus renting a stage, let's, let's get into reality here. Just get into reality and say, "This has been a good thing for our city." Let's become managers and manage this thing. It's, you're right. Mr. Bryan's right. We have mismanaged it. That doesn't mean get rid of it. It just means us managing correctly. And that doesn't mean cutting out some events that are very good for one possible event that might not be so good. We've seen that happen too many times. It's because one individual or one organization is bad, therefore you get rid of it. That's just not good management. And this council is scared to death to make some type of decision that will might put a little bit at risk. And I say, "Let's get on with it. We got a good thing. Let's fund it, and let's put a little rental into it so we can offset some of the costs."
I don't think anybody, the council talked about getting rid of it. All we're trying to do is define good usage of it. I mean, so, I question how you, how Mr. Huffman thinks we're talking about getting rid of it. We're trying to keep it, limit its usage so it lasts as long as possible and is available to the city functions that require it. And, you know, limit its usage, not get rid of it.
If I may, Mr. Cummings, your statement here, I know you're trying to be very, uh, direct in its usage, but I find it very ambiguous.
Well, as Mr. Wood admitted, if we put the word "only" in there, it takes care of it. So, I mean, I will admit I didn't put the word "only" in it.
And that's what I don't wanna see is "own." Mr. Bexler.
I'd like to keep the word "only" in there, but also I like Mr. Goodwin's point. When we come in two weeks for council, for a vote, we need to move on this. I would like to have a list of the River Fest and other functions that we feel that we should have, and we then can either keep them in there as a grandfather or strike them. And let's get it done in two weeks, and then move on.
I'm gonna have to take this. When I will come up with this.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think, once again, as, uh, Mr. Dyer indicated there, that grandfather might be a problem. But, uh, somehow we do have to decide as endgame, what is a city event? How do you define a city event? You know, and that's what I'm saying, is if, if it were like River Fest or another organization that we felt strongly that we needed to have, uh, you know, we could just say, you know, it may be name only, but we could be a, a sponsor or a partner with them, you know. And that way, we got a responsibility there too, as far as the stage goes or whatever. I think, I think we could make this thing work out, but, uh.
It's just like a, a picnic, the pig.
Picnic, yeah.
I mean, you know, that.
If I may suggest that, I think most of us are in concurrence, is that we asked Mr. Dyer to rewrite this example so that it fits what we're all talking about. I mean, we're all talking about supporting River Fest and certain organizations that we've supported in the past. Why not just put the wording that'll allow us to go in?
Yeah, I, I, I did some research about special events for something else, and I remember seeing some cities that had definitely since sponsored events.
If you would, and do that, and get that to everybody before, you know, well, in next, next week, so we can look at it and already buy it in.
I, I think at a minimal, what you would do is, if some group came to the city, you just wanna vote on it.
Yes.
And say, "We are, we want to be a sponsor of that, and our sponsorship's gonna be provided by the state."
You do that now.
Me too.
Down to what?
Absolutely.
Before we gain by doing that, if somebody come to you now, but you wait to the table, the stage has.
Well, the, the problem is, the problem is this. I mean, it's, it's the concerns about if you do it for one, you gotta have some rules. Or else somebody's gonna say, "Why would you give it to me?"
And I said, "Well, I said, "Why to go?" If you put it in the annual budget, you know in advance.
But that's not gonna cover River Fest. That's not gonna cover the entire rule.
Absolutely, it'll cover River Fest. You put the River, you put those in the annual budget that they adopt, and that creates that waiver in advance.
That's probably in figure.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you do that and not do it for everybody? Well, I thought you were not trying to do it for everybody. I thought you were trying to be selective. I'm not, but, but I, I still think you're gonna have to declare that the city is a sponsor of it, a part of that. If the city got a budget, that's a sponsorship.
Instead of grandfather, but.
But if we put it in like, if we put it in like that, then we, then are we gonna be able to get any revenue?
Not from that, no.
Not from, exactly, not from that, and we need a little revenue to defer some of the repairs, at least about seven tires or.
I think, I think our revenue's gonna come from the event itself, from bringing people into the city. We're gonna be spending money here. They're gonna be taxed, maybe we sell taxes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with that. And it's in the budget, then the, the budget's gonna cover the whole cost, so we don't have to worry about this again. I'm all for that. I'm, I'm with you, if you wanna do it that way.
Bob's gonna work on something between that and then. It's time to move on to something else now. We got enough of that. Okay, uh, update on the Enroll River Park, Heritage Park, walking trail, Mr. Bexler?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have got it staked, center lined. We're getting specs to move forward. We've got approval to get the specs and the plan laid. And next thing we need to do is get that set up for a bid form, get bids out, get it moving. The trail, I walked it today with Mr. Huffman and a couple of the city staff. It is gonna be a really neat trail from Heritage down to Hutterwall. It's gonna be in a woodland area. It's gonna be kind of some open areas and back into woodlands. It winds in and around, and then it comes out to the bridge, and then you go over the bridge. So, as Mr. Huffman mentioned earlier about a ten K or a five K or some other types of activities, this thing is really gonna tie the two parks together, and eventually we'll have both tied in too. But right now, the location down there is looking great, and I didn't see any bugs or skids or anything when I was in there, so, uh, it's, it's looking good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion of the athletic field management, uh, Mr. Bexler?
That's, that's me. I'm just disguised. You have in front of you a, a document that was drawn up by John Hicks of the Y, Director of the Y, as well as, uh, the label assistant, Jordan. And I guess I could go through and read all this, but we are, we're just in the early stages of developing a program for the field management. And so, I, John and I asked Mr. Hicks to put together some roughs, and these are just rough ideas that we can look at, read, make your notes, and we can come back. Mr. Hicks is in the audience, and would like, if you would like to address any issues that you might see right now, to bring those questions up to him, I would refer you to turn to the last page. I think the first two pages we discussed at our last meeting are some of the things that we would expect the Y to do. We had the manual of what we want, the agreement of how we wanted to work, and this, uh, that part was discussed in the first two pages. On this third page, though, are some estimates of, just to give you an idea, what kind of revenue could be generated from the three fields that we presently have or will have. And it's roughly four hundred and eighty thousand square feet. It will be subdivided into three fields as we've seen on the schematic. But in reality, is a, a one soccer field or a cross field is pretty large for a full-size field. And we probably would not have those filled with the age group that would take up the whole field. So, we would subdivide the, the large field into four, possibly eight. I don't know. John might be able to address that, and have the smaller kids playing on one of those fields. And then we can graduate up into the next age group. We can take the second field, which would be a full-size field. You can split that in half and have two, two fields there, and then move right on up to the third field, which would be a full-size field. Depending on the age group and how they progress. And you can see the revenue dollar potentials of what it can mean. If you drop down to the bottom bullet, it says, assuming that there will be two main seasons, the city revenue will be an estimated of roughly seventeen thousand dollars a year, if fully leased. That would not account for, uh, some of the special events that might come in in addition to that. And you will see it up towards the top, where is that? Oh, right at the very bottom. The Y is estimating just to, to run the fields. And that means clearing all the coaches, certifying the coaches, registering the, the kids to play, all the various things that are listed in the first two pages. That would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars, rather than the city go out and hire an individual or place this responsibility on another individual that's already with the city. I think you can see that we could operate as far better spending ten to fourteen thousand dollars at the Y to run that for us. We would want, at the same time, John has requested that, and I think there's no question that we would want this, is that we would have a small committee that would probably be, Mr. Kenjibi would be on it, uh, Mr. Wood, some of the council members, that if there were issues that would come up that would, that Y doesn't want to address because of the nature of it, that the council would, we'd bring it to the council, make some decisions, whatever that might, may be. But we will have those type of issues, I'm sure, in the future. So, I wanted you to, uh, look at this in, in detail, if you would, and make your marks or your questions. And if you have some question, uh, John, if you would like it, Mr. Mayor, could I have John come forward?
Sure.
And John.
I did think, though, as you indicated, I think maybe we may have to get him to come back when, when he's digested this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, as Hooky said, if you look at the first couple of pages of the document, it's really taking the procedures manual and breaking it now into really task and work units, that things that are gonna need to be done to, to actually implement that process. And it's, there's more to it than things I've done, just gotta look at. And then, as Hooky said, then we can look at, just a very preliminary look at what the potential utilization revenues rate could be. It's, it's hard to get real firm about that until you see which groups say they're looking for field space that they need, because that's gonna change from fall season to spring season, some variation about, you know, what, what the needs are and how much of the field, how much field space they need, so there's some variation with the revenue structure. Just as Hooky said, how do you lay it out, and, and how many different groups you can handle having that back? If you have six or eight groups, that you may have a set of groups in there in the morning, and a different set of groups in the afternoon on Saturdays, and practices will be, you know, so there, there's a lot of variation. You know, sometimes you're still, "Why the heck, uh, shouldn't, shouldn't the Y do this?" You know. Because we do ourselves as, as, obviously as a real partner with the city, and, um, this is, this is not a job that somebody's running out to do, because you're gonna make a lot of money. You're gonna produce a whole lot of fun, because it's, it's mostly being a referee and, and, and keeping the process running straight. We're really committed to helping the city have a quality recognition service and keep ours up to do that.
John, a question. You mentioned referees, which just popped up a flag. Uh, those referees get compensated, don't they?
Yeah, but that's the responsibility of each league. In other words, they use athletic group that comes in. They have their section of the field. They're gonna be responsible for painting the lines, setting their goals up, hiring their referees, staff. We're just overseeing all that process so that they have properly certified and background-checked coaches, volunteers, and then in terms of the actual operation of their program.
John, will the Y be a youth athletic association as well?
Then we would, we would also be a user.
So, you'd be managing your programs too there?
Correct. We don't anticipate needing all of this money. We'd just be one of, one of the users. We have to keep this process very transparent, so people felt that it was fair that we weren't taking advantage of it.
Two seconds.
Special.
In the policies and procedures that we signed off on, look so back, that was specifically specified that they would have to, or whoever does this would have to follow those procedures. And that, that is what Page One, Page Two is about, re, re-going through those and identifying that. And when a conflict comes up, it goes to the city. It does not stay with them. They're just a administrative part of it. The other thing is, John, uh, I see where you just had Enroll. We, we want Bowlin in there too.
That's right.
So, so we're, the numbers could be very close to go up, because there is that part down there. We need to include that in.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
That's a good point.
Looked at that. We just looked at.
Yeah, right. The fact that we're moving more into more, more physical parks, that, uh, we've had a, a working relationship, and we wanna continue those working relationships with who we've been doing with, uh, down in Bowlin. And, but at the same time, because we're, we are getting bigger, we, we need to formalize it a little bit. And we will, I would suspect some of the people down in Bowlin would probably wanna move up to these two parks. It very, would be reasonable to believe. I foresee this is just. I foresee, this is just, my gut feeling is that this park will be used primarily for soccer and lacrosse. I keep mentioning football. Of course, we can't put up fences and goalposts for football, but junior football, I guess we could. But until we get that turf in and get that stabilized, I would say the first usage would probably be limited. And the earliest we probably can use it, we were over there today, and the superintendent said he's got the turf ordered. It will probably go down in, I would say, in the next four weeks, if not sooner. As soon as he gets the irrigation done, the turf will go down. So as soon as we might be able to play, will be probably spring of next year.
Mr. Baker?
The key element here is, for once, I think the city's ahead of the game. We are looking down the road. This is what's going to come to us. We're looking at how we want to manage it right now, this get in place, because, John, you said the soccer starts formulated for in those spring, late spring programs in January, September?
Most registration forms for spring soccer will be on the street by the first, you said, we start to take registration.
Well, so we've got to move on, but.
And realistically, you could play on those fields in spring, but those turf managers, people, they tell you wait for fall. Let it have a full summer grow in and then your turf is gone. I mean, when you hate to wait, that's a fact.
I'm just excited about it. Putting that turf down doesn't mean anything, that you just said. We are not going to have that open until that turf is established. And we cannot do it until we take ownership. And as long as that organization is running that program, that's theirs. And part of that, to make sure that all the plannings and all the other stuff that's going on down there, we've got to stay out of it. So it'll stay locked.
Anyone else?
Can you expand a little bit on that, as long as they're running it, they'll own it?
You're talking about the contractor?
The contractor has the.
Okay. I was thinking you were thinking of the Y.
No, no, no. Contractor has not turned it over yet. When they turn it over, they will sign off on it. So it's, yeah, all this stuff has got to be done before that happens. But the good news is, yeah, we're going to be able to get the turf down and get established. Irrigation's going in right now, so.
We'll go in and take a look in a week. So as the superintendent says, we're starting to build vertical now, which is quite exciting.
Everybody take this with you and whatever notes as Mr. Huffman indicated on there, and then we'll try to get the answers, the questions answered in due time there, hopefully. Okay, update on street improvements, Wood?
We've interviewed six engineering firms which specialize in or have divisions which specialize in roads improvements and management programs. We've narrowed that field down to three. We're currently reviewing their respective proposals in greater detail. We expect to have a specific recommendation to city council for the firm, which we consider the best to meet our particular needs and objectives at the next city council meeting.
I don't know, is there a discussion of signs in the Ottawa River, Mr. Huffman?
Yes, not much of an update. Only thing is that I would, like Mr. Wood or Mr. Patton, to probably look into what we have to do in order to put signs on the bridges.
I've written a note to the DOT area engineer requesting that DOT put signs up on state highways where they cross over the Ottawa River within the city limits. Obviously, we can do what we want to on Willasko.
Move forward on Willasko and wait for DOT. Thank you, Summer.
Thank you.
Discussion of the speed limit change from thirty-five to forty-five between Riverstone Boulevard and Reservoir Office entrance. It's about a mile on Flugs Parkway there. Mostly Flugs Parkway, I guess, at the beginning of Riverstone, beginning at Riverstone Boulevard.
Which is the intersection with Sears.
You're right, it is Sears shopping area there.
I think most people who ever travel that section of road, the road overall was designed for a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit, but that is overall. That one mile section that the mayor just mentioned, from that intersection there where Sears is, down to where we would propose that the speed limit be increased to forty-five would be about where the new driveway is up to the reservoir management office. That section there, you almost have to stand up on your brake to hold it to forty-five. And I've discussed on more than one occasion, probably to boring detail to him, with the city engineer, whether or not we would, he felt like we would be compromising any legal issue if we raised it just in that one mile stretch. And he, on two different occasions, has told me he did not think so because sight distance requirements. There is no development at all in there, so you don't have to curb. The only curb cut at all in that one mile stretch is down at the bottom of the hill where you go up to the backside of the dam. So if the city ever needed to reduce it back to thirty-five, it could, but for the foreseeable future, forty-five seems to be very reasonable speed limit.
Okay, next item, discussion of proclamation policy, council amendments.
I don't know how I got designated this, but somehow I got designated. What you have is an attachment, I find very good, with one exception that I didn't like, and that is the very last sentence, a proclamation presented at a council meeting will not be readed in its entirety and will be placed on the city's website. The only thing I think that should be is there are going to be some that you want to read in there in entirety, and this would restrict any from being read. And I think that should be a discretion of the mayor, or that piece should be at the discretion of the mayor as to whether he wants to read the entire proclamation or not at a council meeting.
Well, you know, I think it's kind of important. If someone is here to accept it particularly, if not, then I'd say we just make note of it and move on. But if someone's here to accept that proclamation, then I think it's probably important to read it to them.
Yeah, I think.
For everyone to know what it actually says, you know. But anyway, I agree with that. Anyone else have any comments or anything on that? Okay. Next item, discussion of May seventeenth, two thousand and twelve meeting policy. You have attached there, I guess it is, let's see, which one is it, six?
Five.
Five? Okay. This was the procedure of policy that was adopted by the city council back in May of two thousand and twelve, which indicated that we would be, during our work sessions, we would not be voting in a work session. It would be for discussion purposes only, and only action would be taken during an actual emergency situation. The thinking at the time that this was put together was that a work session gave the full council a meeting, which they didn't have to start worrying about how they were going to vote until they really fully and each of us understood the problem. It gave us, you know, some discussion back and forth about the pros and cons of the issue so that we hopefully would better understand it. And it, secondly, it also gave the public additional time to know what was being discussed. And if they had input, they would have a couple of meetings there to make, have public input if they chose to do so. So it really served two purposes at that time. Nevertheless, we have, this council has decided that that's not what they want to do. And I place this on the agenda simply so that the opportunity is there. If it's a policy that we're not going to go by, we don't need it, we don't need to have it. If we're going to go by it, then fine. But if we're not going to go by it, I think we need to, might as well just say so long. We don't need policy book out there, you know, with things in there that we have no intention of doing. Anyway.
Yes, sir.
That's mine.
Thank you. I would agree one hundred percent that if we're going to have a policy, we need to go by it every time. And I was the one that was a strong, one of the ones that was a strong advocate of this work session, action session format. But like so many things, the government does, it has the opposite effect of what the intended effect was, and it's actually confused people. I actually had an email this morning from a citizen wanting to know if they could attend today because it said work session on the agenda. I mean, so, and people don't know if we're going to vote or not. We've had the head nods and the times have come up, and it's just, I think that we should just admit that it was a good, seemed like a good idea, that just turned out to be not a good idea. And we should just acknowledge that every meeting is a meeting and subject to vote. That's why the state law states that any time there's a quorum present, we can vote. And there's been so many times that we've had to discuss, is this an emergency or not? And then we've kind of just gone to the head nod, if it's a time constraint. Nobody really knows if we're going to vote or not. So it's created confusion instead of an orderly, once-a-month vote and once-a-month work session. So I would certainly, I had sent an email this morning saying that I would bring up a motion to eliminate the work session, but since this meeting's a work session, we've two weeks to vote on it, but.
I just want to see if you'd do that.
Set me up for that. But so I will wait. I'm not going to make a motion today, but I would encourage us to just go ahead and acknowledge, let's do what we're doing anyway. So let's just do away with the work session concept and have every meeting a voting.
Mr. Gump? I partially agree, Mr. Bryant. I think there should be a policy, because there, I'll give you an example. We had an item on tonight's agenda, of which an attachment was presented to council for the first time tonight. And if we just eliminate this policy, theoretically, Mr. Huffman could make a motion to accept this item that the council has had absolutely no time, and it is the management of the field management, to accept that immediately and not have had any time on which to review it. And I think, and that there are items that we should procrastinate, that the first time they hit the agenda, should absolutely, the majority of us are going to vote for it, and go ahead and vote those items. But how do you differentiate? I think I'll give this some thought and come back when we have our next meeting with some ideas of where we can try and meet both. The objectives of giving the public time, the council time, and also the ability to expedite those items and not have them just dragged on to two meetings where it's not necessary. How does that?
Yes, sir. The thing that bothers me most about during the work session is not have the capacity to go ahead and make a motion and call for a vote. And I don't believe that, I understand what you're saying about the concern of something just dropped in front of you and say, make a decision. I think what we do also say, we'll postpone that. For like, oh, that could be. But the head nod is the one that really bothers me. And there've been many occasions where we had an issue come up that Mr. Wood brought forward and said, hey, time constrained situation is, we need to get an answer. And we sit here and do the head nod, which I think is totally wrong. Because we wait until we do the head nod and everybody's positive, then we go to the two weeks later and do the vote. And I think, what are we doing, kidding ourselves? We're sitting here like nodding our heads. So if it's important enough to call for a vote or a head nod, it should be important enough to call for a vote. So I feel that we don't abuse it, and the future council will be addressing these same issues. Hopefully, they don't abuse it. And this happened two council meetings, it's stated. State law says you have a fore, a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if you don't remember, I'll remind you. I was never for doing it this way. But with that said, if we don't accomplish one thing, is what Mr. Bryant brought up, if you take out our good staff that's in attendance, our media that's in attendance, and our candidates who are in attendance, what do we have left as far as citizens that are here to hear our meeting? It could be, because work sessions generally have a common theme of being boring, and so if we say it's a council meeting, which it is, then maybe we'll turn out some people that would come in and they'd be better informed citizens. For that reason alone, first, and the other reasons, because I believe in expediting rather than going over and over.
Okay, well, if you don't remember, then I'll tell you too. I still support that policy.
I know you do.
I think it's the best way to go. I mean, government bias on nature should move slowly, keep you from screwing up anymore than we already do, you know, any quicker anyway. And so, I mean, you make mistakes of this, you can do, but I kind of feel like, you know, just like the head nod you mentioned. If we do a head nod, and that's not what these folks out here and others out in the community think we ought to have been doing, we'll hear from them before that final vote. You know, we may hear from them. Otherwise, we probably won't. But I think, I think it's a good policy, but I do respect what the council says here, and we'll move on. Anyone else? All right.
This was the agenda for this council meeting. That will be put back on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Oh, yes, it will be.
For a big vote.
Right, it will be. It will be. Discussion of the Cannon Park Roundabout.
Jessica. Ms. Norman, you have before you two area photos. One is the, basically it's the whole downtown city. And on it, the issue is the square about that we'll be talking here. And that's the Grover Park, one-way streets. And if you look at the close-up shot, you'll be able to see the traffic flow. As you well know, currently, if you're headed east on Main Street, you can turn in right next to the old Regency Bank building and find parking. And if you missed and saw a parking spot down in front of Clouds Insurance or something, you could say, oh, I got to go around. So you got to go around the entire, down by the fire department, down to Bonn Hill, circle around, come back up to get over, try to get to that one. The flow is wrong. It's like brushing your hair backwards. What you need to have is the flow, as it's shown here. I'd like for you to take it under advisement. I'm not asking for a vote, just got it tonight, first look at it. But Mr. Wood mentioned to me that the parking study, they did mention why you have it running backwards. So maybe with the parking study saying it needs to be looked at. The other important part is, the Jones Building is being refaced or unfaced, or whatever you want to call it. And that parking area right there is being pretty little beat up. What a great time for when they come and remove that, they'll change the stripes there and it won't cost us a whole bunch. And we'd have to do the other side, we'd have to put up some signs and say, here's the new flow. There was one statement that was made some time back, if you again look at the big picture, parking lot behind the courthouse, you come out, it's a one-way street, they got to head, I call it west on North Street. They come down right at the Jones Building, they can turn and go around and head out East Main, but they can't go and head down toward City Hall, because it's offset. But if we make that change, they could come out and come around by the old Regency Bank building, come around, and then either go out East Main Street or come down to the City Hall. And it gives a good flow. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes.
You've been around a while.
Yes.
Do you have any idea why we did it the way it's done now?
I think there was, there may have been a safety issue. I'm trying to remember. Jack will tell us in a minute probably, but. Jack will tell us in a minute probably, but I think it had to do with if you, if you, number one, if you come out of the courthouse area, you would have to kinda go back against the flow on North Street to shoot across by the bank a little bit. But then when you come out there, you're, uh, and if you wanna go down Church Street, you got, as if there were traffic, a lot of traffic there, you'd have to shoot across two lanes to go down there. There's not much room to really get out and get in the right lane and then turn right. I know, I mean, I don't know that that's, maybe the problem. But, uh, Jack, do you remember why it was changed?
Post office was there. People would come up Church Street and take a right and immediately block both lanes of Main Street trying to get to the post office. Eddie McCollum was the city manager at the time and decided, and instead of doing like Atlanta and putting the little plastic things, don't...
Yeah.
They allowed left turn from Church Street. It should've been a right turn only to go straight. Then they could've got into the circle and it would've worked. But what they did was change the direction of both sides of parking. It'll work with both sides of parking changed now, as long as Church Street is turn right only and you can't turn across, you block it so that you could go by Jones Parking too.
Church Street is right turn only?
Church Street is what we would go through here to get to Canton Park.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's right turn only now, like it is now, you're talking about.
Yes, but when you turn right, they were turning immediately left to go to the post office. And because the traffic, parking was the other direction, you've got to block, no additional left turn, right at, right turn, so they don't block both sides of Main Street.
Right. Any other questions?
If anybody wants to explain that to them, I'll explain it.
Maybe it had to be a...
Somebody did that. I mean, I remember when there was a, a fountain right in the middle of that park. So, other than that reason, other than that reason of the post office, then there's no, that we can see right now, reason not to do what, what...
I, I agree with Hooky, there's no real reason not to change it back, as long as you prevent people coming from City Hall to go to the park, took a right, and then immediately left. They still need to go around the block and keep the traffic flowing on Main Street.
Mr. Mayor? There's a street light there. There's a street light.
A what?
A street light, a red light, green light. On Church Street, as you come up.
Yeah, sure.
So, you, so, there's no traffic flow, that if you wanted to go over to that particular spot...
No, you can't, you can't make, you can't make a left and go to that part, was that what you're saying?
No, you can't do that. You make a right and then you can make a left. There's nobody coming at you.
Maybe you had a, had a right, allowed a right turn there.
Yeah.
Then you could cross over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might wanna put a sign on the right turn, red.
There's one right now, but if you took it away, you'd have to stop running. If you took that right turn away and, and allowed it, then the people couldn't cross over and go down. If you allowed the right turn here right now, there's no right turns.
Oh, I never did that to that.
Where you come out of?
Like it comes from the City Hall.
Right turn?
Oh, okay.
Lights, lights green for you to come out.
Well, I think, uh, you know, I think we do have that parking stand too, and I guess they, they, like we say, they mentioned that, and, uh, our staff oughta be looking into, maybe to see what they need to do there for, like, to have it on the agenda for two weeks.
We're gonna have on the agenda for two weeks a recommendation for a road transportation consultant. I, I'd recommend you let them look at this, and it may be that this is what they recommend, but I don't wish we're gonna make it.
We got embarrassed for that, but not good. When I said comb your hair backwards, I realize that you're kinda light on the top like I am, but it still, it feels when you do that.
You're certain your feelings now, ain't ya?
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, I'm very few point, but I guess there's one in there somewhere.
I think that'd be a good idea. Also, there's one other street, the one that goes almost across Cherokee Cleaners there, that's one way. Yeah, people tend to go the wrong way one way. We've had several accidents there. In fact, my daughter was in there one day. And, uh, and I know, I was thinking John said that a while ago, but I may have misunderstood they've done by going down and coming back around at that point. But, uh, I think, yeah, let's let the guys that are experts maybe take a look at this.
Yeah, because they may wanna, they may wanna change the direction of that street to the fire park.
That's what I'm thinking too, because...
That may be something.
It makes a little more sense in going the way that you're going now.
Well, that's the next week, I don't know.
Yeah, but, uh, one thing that you and I don't remember, and certainly Jack, some of the other people, is this street used to be a two-way street, not a one-way street. We still have some people that are driving one way down that street right now. I'm a two-way down that street. 'Cause I've, I've had to run them down a couple of times and they're going down the street one way, the wrong way.
Okay, all right. Discussion of possible actions says to approve an electronic file disclaimer. Mr. Wood?
We mentioned that in the management letter, it's just an agreement that's required for the wastewater treatment plant, planned designs to be communicated to us electronically, for the understanding, we, they'll, they'll be our maintenance responsibility thereafter. But Kim and Creed, in case you don't know, is a success order inter, inter tech.
Is that, I mean, uh, why, let me ask this, why does that take approval? Let's see, what, what, what do we disclaim?
Well, you're, you're also agreeing to indemnify, you know, to the extent allowed by law. And I told them only the city council could have made an agreement of indemnification.
In, in case what happens?
If some, I don't really understand what's going on here. I mean, what, what this is about, but, but, once we, maybe we're gonna do, we're gonna get some information and they're saying, once you have possession of the information, it's your responsibility. So, we can indemnify this to the extent we're allowed to by law, which we're not allowed to. So, we're not, we're not allowed to indemnify other people's claims, but... There's so many suffer damage because of something the city did while it was in possession of this information, which is pretty slim.
Mr. Mayor, so, I guess, I think the understanding on electronic transfer of documents is that if it's a paper document, you can't really alter it. But with electronic documents, they can be altered. And therefore, they want a disclaimer that if they provide it to you, that once you, upon your receipt, you've got responsibility for those documents should any alterations occur. That's basically what they're saying, is if I get a word document from Mr. X, I may have the capability of modifying that and presenting it as if it was the original document, which it isn't. And that's what they're trying to accomplish by providing the electronic, is that there's a disclaimer on there.
I would think that electronic transfer of, uh, plans and specs, like, that's probably a common thing. Maybe I'm not, but I, but this seems kinda new to me, but I mean, I don't, I don't think that the problem is there in any way.
No.
Well, all you got on those...
No, it's just a tape, a tape you couldn't sign, that's an agreement to...
Okay, is that, is that something you've gotta have right now, that Bill might wanna make a motion to do?
We'll talk about the next time. No motions tonight.
All right. Next item, discussion of a report of accomplishments updated five-year short-term plan and annual updated capital improvement, uh, element as required by Georgia DCA and ARC. Mr. Wood?
I think we adequately addressed that in your management letter, if you read that, the, the reasons that we need to, to have council's authorization to transmit that to, uh, ARC and DCA that enable us to maintain our qualified local government status. After, I was on this committee when they went back in oh-eight, when we developed this plan. In fact, I chaired it committee. There's a lot in here, an awful lot. And I'm biased, I'll say that right up front. This needs to have its own meeting.
Agree with you on that.
I agree with you on that. It, it's just so much in here that we have discussed and some of the items we have never discussed. And if we're gonna move this city forward, we need to pay attention to this, because there is so much in here that I would like to recommend, in fact, I, I could do it on my own, is to maybe take one or two of those items on this comprehensive plan and place it on the agenda each month. And to have Mr. Wood bring the appropriate, uh, department head, if necessary, to come and address each one of these things on, on an individual basis, you know, not all at one time, but to bring it along and we're to stay focused on what this comprehensive plan is.
Ken, you come up, maybe you...
You've got, we've got, we've got to transmit this to ARC and DCA by the end of October. Just listen to this, I, you can change this plan. You can take all next year and study it and re-study it, we could've been visiting it and revisiting it for the last five years ever since it was proposed. But we've got to transmit it to ARC and DCA by the end of this month so that they've got their thirty-day review process, so that it can then come back to city council for final adoption, so you can still change it during the month of December, in order for us to maintain that qualified local government status.
Same with that. I'm, I'm aware of the process. Like I said, I was chair of that committee, and I understand that it has to be done. My point is not that. My point is that this is a plan, and it's a good plan. There are items in there that will probably drop or could be dropped. But, point is, is that we have a plan that we don't as a council, not to say that Mr. Pat, but as a council, we pay little or no attention to it, and some of the items we do.
Well, let, let me tell you what we're gonna pay attention to. Come January one, we're gonna pay attention to, to, to the State Department of Transportation, telling Joby West that million dollars he thought he was gonna get from Arietta Road, he ain't gonna get.
I understand that part of the assignment. I understand that.
Let me, let me ask you a question here a minute. I, you know, I, I've looked at this and I don't think anybody on here has paid the kind of attention that maybe we should have to this. And, uh, I mean, for instance, I mean, when I, when I look at some of this, it says, you know, for, uh, for instance, uh, the Etowah River Greenway, Phase Two, multi-use, it's a ongoing...
Under construction.
Under construction.
Right.
Which one, what is that?
That's a section between the Etowah River Park and down to Bolin Park.
About Phase Four. What's Phase Four?
I think Phase Four is, uh, the section, uh, that goes on down and connects with Bolin Park, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and, and these are under construction?
Are in design and engineering.
Meal number two to Waleska Street. Uh, is that, what is that?
There's a small section coming out of Heritage Park to the Waleska Street Bridge, underneath the bridge, that is a part of the trail that's proposed, uh, to go on and connect with Bolin Park.
But don't we get all that broke up like that?
But don't we think that these are the items that the council should be involved in to give Mr. Pat, Mr. Wood, his staff the support that the council can give where we can? Now, I understand we can't do them all, but we need to bring, have this in front of us as a plan that we implement, and again, Mr. Wood, moving forward. I understand that we gotta transmit this ASAP.
I mean, we've got on here, construct new elementary school I in the Canton area. Which one's I? What about up on Reservoir Parkway?
Board of Education, uh, has dropped the two elementary schools. If you'll look in the report of accomplishments, uh, uh, it talks about the elementary schools being dropped because of, uh, reduction of, uh, SPOSS funds as well as a reduction in enrollment. In the new proposed five-year work plan, we did add in, uh, construct a middle school. It's under construction and the Board of Education is moving forward with that, uh, item. If I might, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, we were notified August first by ARC staff that we had to, uh, do a new five-year short-term work plan, provide a report of accomplishments out of the one that was done with our year-long process in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Have it adopted here locally after a review process, uh, uh, ARC and DCA by December thirty-first, or we would lose qualified local government status. We could have the option of holding off and do a whole new comprehensive plan and submit that to a review process and adoption, uh, by February of twenty fourteen. Saying that we had the time between August first and when we were notified that we had to do this, uh, part of the reason that it's come to you so, so quickly, if you will, and, uh, we've been working with planning commission, we've taken what was in the existing five-year work plan that was, uh, presented, worked through with the stakeholder committee, planning commission, city council, adopted it in two thousand eight. We've, uh, stated what has been accomplished, what projects are, uh, still in the process, noted as pending, uh, where budgetary constraints have taken place, which items have been dropped. The new proposed five-year work plan does include some new items that came out of, uh, the Stormwater CIP that was presented earlier this year to the city council, uh, that is in the budget process, as well as, uh, a couple of, uh, bridge improvements that, uh, I think that was out of the Stormwater also.
Ken, what, what, what projects are ongoing at Bubbling Park right now? And should that not be, I have, I'm gonna have a little bit of problem between ongoing and pending. That, I, there may be some pending, but is there something really ongoing right now there?
Uh, there, I thought they were working on some kind of an additional trail or something that's been talked about, why Mr. Congenius said, uh, uh, for a couple of years or so, uh, working with Boy Scouts and something in the back end of that. They've had, they've had a new, uh, Zippo field, they put a new playground equipment down there, they're looking at resurfacing, storm restoration, resurfacing, yeah, I mean, all that's ongoing means it's ongoing.
But don't you think that, uh, and, 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 Mr. Pat, I, I surely don't wanna put any negative thought towards you doing, 'cause you do a great job. You really do. And I'm just saying that we spent a lot of time on this, and there's been a lot of time spent on it since, but I don't know that council has spent a lot of time on it. And, I don't know, that, that is our job, this is the city right here. And we need to, uh, make a full meeting out of this, just like you were talking, I mean, you could go all night on, on, on these things. And that, that is something that we should have a separate meeting, Mr. Mayor, to see and, um...
Mr. Mayor? Sidebar, sidebar. I agree with, I totally agree, we need to, probably need to...
In a minute, we have a bit of time. I would suggest that we can take, and, uh, Mr. Pat might wanna be the one who selects it, or Mr. Wood, is that we take two or three or four who are pending and bring these right along every, every council meeting, put that on the agenda, so it doesn't take an enormous amount of time. I'll be through in a second. And the other thing, you're taking my plate? I know, the other thing... Help me, Mr. Mayor, on this. The two thousand fifty commission, which we'll all be dead. The two thousand fifty commission, the vision...
Stop by you, Bill.
We're all gonna be dead, we're all gonna be dead when this thing comes around. Personally, I feel like the vision, and I gave my book to one of the members, this is the map. They can easily fold over vision into this. It doesn't have to be transmitted, it could be a separate document attached to it, at least.
Mr. Kevin, you had a question? When is the next one after this due?
Five years from now?
Five years.
Yes, sir.
Then we can adopt Mr. Hoffman's logical idea and we'll look at each one of these over the course of the next five years, but there's no way that we can go through this whole plan and meet the filing requirements.
I'm not asking that also.
So, I would suggest that we proceed with what we got here and then you would suggest...
You weren't a business, I've said on several occasions.
Mr. Barry Swart, I believe he is named.
Thank you. I concede to the statements made, I agree, let's get it on, bring it, it's gotta be done at the next council meeting for a vote, so we can keep our funding. Then we can get into the other dialogue.
And I, I, I don't know, but I still think we need some...
I'm sorry, you sure work.
We still need a work session here to, to... Still need a work session here to, to better understand. This council needs to understand what's in this document. And I can tell you, most of us do not.
Right.
I think, you might be special, but I don't.
Blood, sweat and tears.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you have anything else to add, Mr. Wood? If not, we'll entertain a motion to.
Sure. She'll move.
That was fair.